Oh, I see, I see.
Okay, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's roll call, please.
Sure, Mrs. Jokat?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Here.
Mr. Valley?
Here.
Mr. Valardo?
Here.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
And Mr. Muscatello?
Here.
This is the Sunshine Law Statement. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Mission Statement: The Stanhope School District will provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiatives, fosters success through teamwork, promotes accountability, demonstrates a passion for educational excellence, and ensures student achievement related to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The Stanhope School District is committed to the development of our students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved through their lifelong learning. This is an executive session announcement. There will be an executive session for the purpose of board member candidate interviews and deliberation, and student HIB formal action may be taken. At this time, we're moving to presentations. Mr. Hagan?
Yes. If you don't mind joining me up. Not a problem. This has become quite a production since we've started live streaming our meetings, so apologize for the delay. First of all, what an incredible crowd. Thank you all for being here tonight to honor and recognize the hard work of our students, the hard work and tolerance of our parents. It is quite an achievement to achieve honor roll, honestly, especially in our middle school. I do feel as though we hold our students to the highest expectations. Our curriculum and the content that we deliver is quite challenging, and they should all be very, very proud of themselves for achieving these marks in each of the marking periods that they achieve. So, honor roll is achieved for a student in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade when they achieve all As and Bs on their report card in all subjects. High honor roll is achieved when students receive straight As for that marking period. Tonight, I'm going to begin reading our honor roll students, and I'll finish up with our high honor roll students, which I believe will be in the order of sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. So first marking period, we did this, looked great on camera, except our students were quite shy. When they came up, they got their certificates and ran away awfully quick. Students, I'm going to ask that when you come up, please greet Mr. Muscatello, who will give you your certificate, and then smile big for the camera so your parents can take a picture of you. And if you don't feel comfortable shaking hands, you want to do a fist bump, just put your fist out, and that's what we do. We go either way, however you want to do it. But do not take the opportunity of a photo away from your parents, okay? All right. All right, so without any further ado, when I call your name, please come on up to the podium. Not everybody whose name I read will be here. We can still applaud, and we'll move on to the next student. So first, I'd like to start with Abigail Andrews. Aiden Bruner. Kagan Fessinger. Great job, kids. Jack Galata. Morgan Kopich. Tabitha Mueller. Sina Azbay. Emily Perry. Kathleen Prano. Tess Roth. Demi Small. Leo Castellana. Dad came just in time. Daniela Siampa. Dominic Eriquetti. Linda Fromm. Dominic Lalama. Amelia Milanovic. Tyler Smith Christie. Christopher Thornton. Donovan Vergano. Jasper Ballow. Aaron Cahill. Michaela Castillo. Wyatt Conklin. Zoe De Oliveira. Noah Denight. Stella Garcia. Christian Komenech. Asla Komurku. Cameron Kopich. Erica Magath. Jackson McDonald. Cameron Mueller. Brooklyn Rose Perez. Tyler Perry. Angelie Portillo. Matthew Rowan. And Carly Vellani. So the following students, again in order of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, have achieved high honor roll, which is straight As for the marking period. Claire Frank. Brayden Light. Kylie McDonald. Caitlin O'Connor. Joshua Perry. Angelina Robles. Sienna Zapata. Analia Baca. Charlotte Harold. Dylan Kelly. Raymond Fromm. Michael Kamek. Jake Palermo. And Daniel Recaldi. Who, who I believe is also celebrating a birthday today, yesterday? Happy birthday. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Congratulations, students. At this time, please feel free, if you haven't done so already, to grab some refreshments. If there's any left there, take some home with you. You are welcome to stay for the remainder of our board meeting, but at this time, we'll give you a few minutes to sneak out if you'd like also. If you do want to stay and chat, I'd ask that you do it in the hallway so that we can start with business in just a few minutes. Thank you so much for being here. Have a good night.
For your own hotspot, or did he?
No, he gave me the hotspot.
He did.
He's the guest, the guest account. It's snowy time. It's snowy time up here, it's 22. What is it that you're doing this year? You're doing personnel? Oh, you're the chair for the policy? Ah, okay. I'll have to meet with him.
Okay, that now moves us into our next agenda item, which is the Board of Ed interviews. Mr. Hagan, if you wanted to?
So, we have two candidates for this one open position, which was vacated at the beginning of the year. If you remember, Mr. Iftikhar was elected in and then elected to not participate on the board. We have two candidates, Mr. Yakub Yagnam and Mr. Carmen Pico. We are going to, or the board will interview the candidates in the order in which they applied for the position. So Mr. Yagnam will be interviewed first. The interview will take place in public session, and at this time, I'll ask Mr. Pico to just wait in our conference room during the interview, and then we'll switch and interview Mr. Pico after our first one. At that point, the board will break. There are two items that need to be discussed, one of which being the deliberations on these interviews in executive session, at which point the board will return from executive session, and it is hopeful that at least one candidate will be nominated and then voted on tonight, okay? So, Mr. Pico, if you don't mind, I'll bring you to our conference room.
Good evening. How are you tonight? I'm doing great. I'm doing great. Why don't you come up to the podium here?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening.
If you just take 15, 20 seconds, your name, where you live. If you just take 15, 20 seconds, your name, where you live, a little, just a short brief time in town, etc.
Yeah, I live on Sixth Reef. My name is Yakub Yagnam. I currently have a child enrolled in first grade. I intended this school, graduated in eighth grade, and I went on to Lenape. And I'm just looking to give back to this community that's given me so much.
Thank you. I'll start off the interview questions. What do you see as the role a school board member has? What's your role as a school board member?
One word comes to mind, I would say inclusion. Hearing different point of views to ultimately have goals to lead our kids into the future. Focusing on education, obviously, and finding out different ways to enhance what's already in place.
And your responsibility back to the community? How would you be able to communicate your ideas or gain information from the community?
First things first, you can't hear much when you're talking all the time, so I like to listen a lot. Like to hear what the community is looking for, and more importantly, where they see their children, what direction they would like to go into, whether if it's curriculum, what type of equipment or technology that's going to be implemented in the future. I always say, any idea is a good idea when you have good intentions.
Anybody with a follow-up question? I think we'll now jump to Jen and come back.
What do you see as the current strengths of our district?
Communication. It was the thing that really led me here in the first place. You know, my daughter began last year in the height of COVID. Seeing the way everyone conducted themselves, the rules made sense. It was about safety, but more importantly, common sense. So, the, the strong communication from the board, from superintendent to the parents. And the response to, I can't, you know, I was pleasantly surprised where there's apps where I can message teachers. I can find out information pretty easily with this school district and with the school.
Anybody with a follow-up? Ateya?
Sure. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
You know, while my profession does involve, you know, construction and buildings and what I do best is develop people and work with people. I'm lucky enough to have 22 employees. Every step of my career and successes that I've had in life is with the support of people and listening, and more importantly, leaning on people. So, it's really about just finding what strengths I have and find to work with people on my weaknesses.
Questions? Matt?
Oh, my turn. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Are you aware of the time the training commitments and ethical law disclosures required for the school board membership? And do you have any concerns about fulfilling those requirements?
I am. I will take those commitments very seriously. I currently do continue an education for different several areas of my field. It will become a main priority of mine, as I wouldn't not take this lightly. And more importantly, I have a lot to learn. Sitting in some board members, and the last one I missed, but I was able to hear it online. I'm realizing there's a lot of aspects of this that I'm eager to learn. I didn't really realize how in-depth and, more importantly, how involved every decision is that's made by teachers, budgeting. So, I'm just eager to learn the process and what entails, yeah.
Questions, anyone? Kenya?
I know that you're saying that you have a baby on first grade, right?
Yes.
Nice. So, I know you haven't been around for a long, I mean, in the school for a long time. If your kid just started first grade. But, I mean, your resume, it says that you went to high school here?
Correct, I went to Lenape Valley.
You went to Lenape Valley, but you know, from your time in the community, you know, what areas do you think this district needs to improve upon? From your short experience as a new set of eyes for the community?
You know, and I've been fortunate enough, I have two other family members that go to the school. At my time at Lenape Valley, I was class president. And I only bring that up for, you know, not to boast, but growing up till now, I feel different ways of teaching, technology can really bolster our children's future. I do believe that with the implementation of, hopefully, like the STEM lab and, you know, just finding different ways to connect with kids. It's a different world. I'm finding that out every day with my seven-year-old. I also have a three-year-old son that I'm looking forward to bring through this school system. And it's hard sometimes. It really is. What I was used to growing up, I'm ready getting into that "back in my day" mantra with my kids. So, it's about keeping an open mind and understanding, I'm not going to be able to control everything. She had her first negative interaction with a student the other day, and I was just like, oh, God, what do I do? So, just remembering that these are children and they're here to learn. And as I always tell her, school is supposed to be work, not fun, but you can have fun at work. I hope that answers your question.
So, overall, basically, you stayed in, basically, keep an open mind and listen to the community like we have been doing?
Yeah, I've been doing brief, you know, prepping for this as much as I could. I've been just trying to look online, what other schools are doing throughout the country to connect with kids. More importantly, use technology to their benefit. You know, I can present some of those ideas now, but overall, that's what I'm really eager to learn. And the budgeting that goes behind it is something that I'm not really naive about. I understand we are a smaller school, and some of the things that are read online might not always be possible. But it's always good to hope.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any follow-up? Tom?
What is your vision of a quality public school district?
Healthy, safety. Letting kids find their own way. Not everybody's meant to be a doctor. Not everybody's meant to go to college. But finding a safe place to learn and feel welcome throughout their eight years here, or whatever time period. It's about making kids want to come to school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone to follow up? Do you have any questions for us?
Not so much. I just respect and appreciate you guys' time, sitting in on the past couple of meetings. I realize you're all volunteering your time as well. So, if it doesn't work in my favor, I still want to say thank you, guys. I still plan on being involved as much as possible with the school district. And, you know, I'm assuming some, some, if not all of you have been parents, you know, any advice, shoot it my way.
Any questions you wish we had asked you?
You know, I've given, there are other areas I have given back to my community. And to, you know, one thing me and my cousin do is every month, we volunteer for something for our kids so we can teach them. So, we do annual Alex Lemonade stands to raise money. It's one thing I've always been kind of good at, growing up, was raising money for charities. I have volunteered for Bergen County VA to professional development program for veterans who are returning, looking to get back in the workplace. You know, I've always just tried to find, I don't want to say are more vulnerable populations to assist, but the people who want to be assisted. And I'm always learning from other people. That's one of the biggest reasons why I like to give back, is I learn just as much from other people. Oh, and I like to make mistakes. I tell that to my employees all the time. If you have good intentions and you make mistakes, that's how you learn in life. So, I go out of my way to make mistakes. I admit when I'm wrong, and I'm wrong a lot, so. I hope that doesn't sound bad, but we all are.
Anyone else from the board have a question?
Any particular, you know, reasons that compelled you to be a board member?
I would say the biggest reason was the referendum. I'm extremely eager to see how the next 10 years look, you know. I, my, my priority in life is my kids. Every facet, extracurricular activities, education. I got really excited when I heard some of the additions that you guys are going to do. Anything, everything from heating this building properly and cooling it, safe roof. I always think in terms of safety, it's just the way I've been trained in my profession. I'm really eager to see how that plays out, and if I can play any, even a small part in assisting. That, that's what my goal would be, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, everybody.
We're just going to swap them up to a swap.
Are you in town? Do you live in town?
Yes. Yes, I went to school here. My kids went to school here.
Oh.
Yes. My daughter's 21 next week. My son's 15.
She lives right next to Lyndon Avenue School?
Yes, the one we just sold. Which they're doing a great job on, I have to tell you guys.
Looks like they cleaned it up.
They're doing an amazing job. They're in the middle of replacing the fences. They took down all the old
Where do you live? What was, what was that?
The school we just sold. I live down over in that part of town. Oh, and they're doing an amazing job.
Oh, they're already working on it?
Yes. I haven't seen inside yet, but I feel like I might go knock on the door. Yeah.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm fine. How are you?
I'm doing well. If you just want to take 20 seconds, a half a minute, and just tell us your name, where you live, just a little bit about yourself, and then we'll start.
Carmen Pico, 25 New Street, stay at Hope, naturally. I've been, I, we moved here nine years ago. I have a very good interest in education. Before moving here, I was on the school board in Randolph, which they had five schools. Part of my, my job was buildings. Anything had to do with the buildings. If they went out on bid, I advised them if it was good or bad. Then I used to go around to all the buildings and check to make sure that the custodians and the maintenance guys were doing their job. I feel it's important that we do that because then we won't have to have another big referendum like we have now. Basically, that's all I have to say, you know, about my, well, I've been driving the school bus for 21 years. I'm part of Little League Baseball for 40, 50 years, and I'm a US Army veteran.
Oh, nice. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Ask me questions.
Okay, okay. What we're going to do, each, each one of us will ask you a question. I'll start off, and then we'll go around the table. Okay? What do you see your role as a board member? What's your role as a board member?
Well, as a board member, I feel strongly about this, is communication. Without the right communication, you'll be just spinning our wheels. I like to communicate with the staff. I'm an on-hand person. And I think it's important that we all understand what education is all about. I don't know what else to say about that.
That's, when you say communication, talking to them, emailing them, what do you usually discuss with the staff when you communicate?
What I do is maybe twice a month, I would meet with the staff, have lunch with them, talk to them, ask them if there's any issues that they have that we can handle ahead of time before it gets out of control. Just communication with the staff and the board members. I mean, I'm not going to do anything that the board doesn't want me to do. You would have to guide me to say what I can do and what I can't do. I'm, like I said, I'm a hands-on person. I like to get involved in the, in the education.
Anybody with a follow-up question?
Is that some of the similar duties that you had as part of the Randolph Board of Education?
Say that again.
Do you do something similar as part of the Randolph Board of Education?
I don't understand.
Meaning with the staff twice a year, I mean, twice, twice a month, or being more involved with the staff in the school? Is that part of what you did in the previous?
Exactly. I'm sorry if I didn't say it right. That's exactly what I did. And like I said, I feel it's important that they get to know me as a board member. That, you know, I'm, I'm looking out for their interest as well as the children's interest, because they're the ones that educate the children. So, if there's any problems, I want to know the problems ahead of time. I would bring them back to the board and discuss it and see, you know, if there's a way we can handle it. Sometimes you can't handle the problems that they have because it's out of our realm of experience.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jen, Mrs. Harold?
What do you see as the current strengths of our district?
Well, the strengths, I have two grandchildren that come here. And this district here is a district that actually cares for all the children, and that's important. There are some districts that just push the kids through and don't, and don't follow up on stuff. But my two grandchildren that come here, they, I can see the difference. I have one in second grade and one in kindergarten, and I can see the difference that this district here gives the kids the best education that they can. And I feel part of my role, it's not because I have grandchildren here, but for all the children in the district, I want to make sure that they're getting the best education that we can afford.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
My personality, for one. My skills are in, my skills have been mainly in buildings. When I was in, when I was in Randolph, I was on the negotiating committee for the, you know, the budget and for the, the teachers' union. So, I'm familiar with the hardships that you have when you stop, when you're dealing with that kind of stuff. I like to give everybody the benefit of the doubt, because nothing is written in stone. Anything can be, can be fixed around so that makes everybody happy with the least amount of money. Like when I was in Randolph, they have five schools, and their custodial budget was way out of control. So, what I did is I went around to all the schools, met with the head custodian. We went over the supplies that they had. They had supplies in their closets that was five years back into the, into the corner. Every year, until I got there, every year, they had, they had the same budget. So, what I did is I cut their budget 5% and made them use the stuff that we already paid for. They weren't happy, but listen, it's, it's all taxpayers' money. You know, I'm a taxpayer too, but we're here to, to help the taxpayers.
Anybody with follow-up? Matt?
First off, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
To our country. I appreciate it. What areas do you or would you like to see strengthened in our district? And do you have any specific suggestions for the improvement you had mentioned so that we don't need to have another referendum? So, I'm assuming that there's some areas you would like to see done a little bit differently or have a little bit stronger.
The only areas that I can really come up with right now without inspecting the building and what's going on is the maintenance. When I read that referendum, I said to myself, how, how could we not, how could we have to do all these repairs over these years that weren't done? Maybe because nobody actually looked into it. My, I would be, I'm trying to use a good word here, a pain in the neck, watching, you know, watching over everything. Because I want to know exactly what, what's going on, where the money's being spent, and where can we cut money without cutting the education? You know, the other thing is, as far as my building experience, I don't know if anybody remembers Channel Home Centers?
Yes, yes.
I was the district manager, assistant district manager for 114 stores. So, I'm very well versed in, in the buildings and what it takes to maintain them. I'm, you know, I guess I'm going to bring a different side to the school board that, I don't know if anybody else has my type of experience, but I feel that we have to have a different group of people on, on the board to get together and make one big thing work together for us. My mouth, my mouth is a little dry, but
You want a water?
I have a water over there, but I'll wait until we're done, because this is important to me.
Okay. When Jono was around, that's when Rickles was around too, right?
Yeah, Rickles went out first. And then, you know, I used to have to travel to all these stores. Like, for example, one of the stores in Virginia, the airhammers went. And they wanted, they, they wanted to have a new air, airhammer put in for us. I think back then it was around $20,000. I went there, went up on the roof, only thing the airhammer Only thing the airhammers needed was to be cleaned. There was so much calcium buildup on the, in the airhammers that it wasn't working properly. So this, like I'm telling you, I'm a hands-on person. I wanted to see what's going on and how I can improve.
Okay. Anybody with follow-up? Kenya?
Can you please describe your involvement with the community or nonprofit organizations in the area? Even profit? I know in your letter, you were stating your volunteer with the Fireman Association and some others, but do you have anything else that you would like to describe?
I'm working with a professional wrestling group. If those are, we do fundraisers for schools, for fire departments. I feel that fundraisers for schools, it, it's, that's the easiest way to get a, make a fundraiser. The last fundraiser we, we worked on was for a school in Rock, Rock, Rockaway. And they made about $60,000 for the school. So my wife and I, we both drive school buses. The kids on our bus, believe it or not, and we all know that wrestling is fake, but all the kids on the buses, they love wrestlers. They love to watch the wrestling. So if, you know, if I'm on the board, I can't have any involvement in that. All I could do is suggest it to the HSA if they want to have a fundraiser like that. I'm willing to help with any fundraiser that they have because the more money they make, it's the less money we have to spend.
Aren't you, aren't you active at the municipal level too?
I was just appointed to the board of health last night.
And what, land use? Were you on the land?
Yeah. Back, way back, I was the president of the land use board. But board, back then it was the Board of Adjustment. So, and then they did away with that and they combined it with the, with another organization, another group. So I've been involved in the town as much as I can. I was also on the recreation department in town.
Was that in Randolph or Stanhope?
Stanhope. Everything I just told you was Stanhope.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm too old to be on the fire department. I'm 73 years old. And I feel like I'm about 50. Being, being an Italian, you know, you can't keep us down. We've got to keep moving all the time.
I know.
So I, I ran for the school board here two years before the COVID. I only lost my 50 votes. Democrat beat me out. But anyway, I, I get involved. I like to get involved. That's why I want to get on the school board here because I want to continue to get involved in my community. Ask me more questions, I'm happy to give the answers.
I just, anybody else have follow-ups here? Tom?
What is your vision of a quality public school district?
Quality? The type of building that the kids are getting their education in? The quality of the staff that we have? Letting the kids, how can I? I know I said I was 73, but sometimes my mind doesn't go as fast as what I wanted to go.
Take your time, relax.
Giving the kids the opportunity to succeed more beyond what they think they can succeed. You've got to challenge. If the kids aren't challenged, that's part of the reason when COVID was here, that's part of the reason why the kids fell back because they weren't being challenged. My granddaughter, they only spent like 20 minutes for, for this teacher to be with them for the whole day. So they lost a lot. And I'd like to see them catch up quicker because we, we can't keep on being behind. We have to exceed. That, that's, that's my, that's my golden life, to have all the kids succeed. If they succeed, we're, we're a success because that's what we did for them. Anything else?
I just have one other question. Are there any particular reasons that compel you to be a board member?
Well, I was on the school board before. And when I saw the referendum, I figured my expertise would be able to help the school. For example, a lot of these contractors, if they know that the school board members, they're not well-versed on a lot of things, they'll try to push stuff over on you. And, you know, you've got to really go over the, the proposal that they have to make sure that there's not slipping something in there without you knowing about it. They, they could do that. They, they tried to do that in Randolph. And I wasn't the one that caught it. One of the other, one of the other board members caught it. And I, I don't know. I, I just like to, I'm just a person that likes to get involved and help people. I've been doing it all my life since I got out of high school. 1968.
Anyone else with questions or follow-ups? Is there any questions you have for us, sir?
When will I be sworn in? That's all, you know, you, here, this is me. I know you, I see you, so we're, I don't have any questions.
I can actually answer that question. So if one of the two candidates is voted to be the next board member tonight, we would be hopeful that they'd be, be able to be sworn in at our March meeting. However, that would be pending the clearance of a criminal history record.
I've been a school bus driver for 21 years. I'm cleared all, every.
Doesn't sound like that'd be a problem for you.
No, 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 no. Nope, not at all. Not at all.
Anybody else with questions? Is there any questions you wish we had asked you?
Give me a second to think. You asked quite a few questions, and I hope I gave the answers that came from my heart.
I'm sure you did.
Trying to think. One of the, one of the questions that was, was an ask, I don't think, why do I want to be a school board member? Was that asked?
It was, but in a different terms. But go ahead, tell us why.
That was the question that I, you know, I, I thought I said why I wanted to be a school board member.
You did.
You know, it's in my heart, it's in my nature to be involved with, with the education. I mean, if I had, if I had a dollar for every child that I took to school in my 21 years, I'd be retired. I wouldn't have to work anymore. So I have, I went to a function once, and this lady came up to me and said, Mr. Pico, how are you? I said, I'm fine. Four of my sons really miss you. I said, well, who are you? I forget what her name was. The kids are 25 years old and they're still asking for me. So this is my, this is what I, I guess it was a good impact on the child.
Absolutely.
You know, for me.
You were the first person they saw in the morning.
And the last person when they got off the bus.
You got it.
All right, no, I'm fine. Whatever you got decided is fine with me. But if I don't get a part of it, I'm gonna run again in November anyway. See, that's how I, that's how I am. Hopefully I won't have to, but I better get out of here before I mess it up myself. Nothing else, right?
Just making sure nobody else has any questions.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll go back to the room.
You can actually stay here. We're going to go into executive session. I'll ask Mr. Yagnam to come actually back into this room when we go into executive.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Executive session. Okay, is there a motion for executive? Motion? All right, be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act of Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex, and the State of New Jersey that a closed session of the Board of Education, where the public shall be excluded, will be held at this time for the purpose of board member candidate deliberations and a student HIB. Be it further resolved that the action of the board with regard to the above entitled matter should be disclosed to the public at a later date and to the extent that it is not presidential to the interests of the parties involved and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy. All those in favor of going into executive, say aye? Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Anyone abstain? Okay, we are in executive. Just make sure we turn our.
You're ready. This time, we'd like, need a motion to re-enter from Executive into Public.
Motion. Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, we are back into public session. At this time, I would take a nomination for the appointment of our new board member.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Yakub Yagmen.
Okay. Whereas the Stanhope, excuse me, whereas the Stanhope Board of Education has conducted a search process for a board vacancy through advertisement and solicitation of resumes, and therefore be it resolved that pursuant to NJAC 18A:12-15, the Stanhope Board of Education hereby appoints Yakub Yagmen as a member of the Board of Education to fill the vacancy term to commence immediately upon the receipt of criminal history background investigation through the State Department of Education and upon adoption of resolution to continue through December 31, 2025. At this point, we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Chokat?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharkestein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
If I could, I'm sorry, is that correct, 2025, doesn't he have to run in the next election, the appointment's only for one year?
Um, he's filling.
Even when you fill a three-year term.
Exactly, he's Najib, so then actually that should say 2024.
Which is only two years.
No, it should.
Twenty-four would be one year.
One year.
Right.
Because we're in 23.
You only get appointed for the one-year term and then you have to run anyway, is my understanding?
Okay.
No, that's correct.
Okay.
So when he runs, he's running on a two-year term.
Correct.
Do you understand? That, that, that ends up being, uh, your candidate, there'll be a seat for a three-year term and then a seat for a two-year term. Before.
It wouldn't be 2023, because I think you were 2022 and then you had to go to reelection the same year, right?
Well, he's appointed for this year, right?
Okay.
And it, the new vote happens in November, so he would be voted on in November to finish out the next two years.
Got you.
Okay.
Before we move on, I just want to take a point to say thank you to both gentlemen. It's always a privilege to have multiple qualified people that are interested in serving on the Board of Education and, you know, in the community. And Mr. Pico, I, again, encourage you and urge you to, if you are still interested, to get on the ballot and, you know, we appreciated your passion and your desire to help. And again, thank you for your time for coming out tonight. If you reach out to Mrs. Debbie Lebron, who's our board, our Board Secretary and Business Administrator, she can help you with that process. It's going to be a little while since we, you know, we're relatively early in the year. But I think September, I believe, September.
Ballot process is in June and July.
July.
It's in June and July, and then you get on the ballot in November. Correct.
Okay, yes.
That's correct, by July 30.
I think 10 signatures.
And that's why I asked you to talk to her and not me.
And, and, excuse me, and all of that does not go through the school at all, it's all done through the county. No, everything's done through the county.
Mrs. Lebron can help you with the process, but she, she won't have to give to you. She'll explain to you where to go and where your deadlines are. So I recommend reaching out to her in the spring. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is appointment of delegates. If you remember, in January, when we did the reorg meeting, we appointed Matt and put him on two committees, and we didn't, we asked him to serve on two committees until we were able to appoint our, our board members. So just before the meeting, because Matt served on two boards, I'm sorry, on two committees, I asked which one would he prefer to be on, and he asked me to remain on policy. So he's going to remain on policy, and Yakob, Yakub, you'll be placed on Personnel, okay? Where Jen is the Chair, and I'm also on that committee. Okay? So as far as our agenda, the Chair for, under appointment of delegates, before we do a motion, I just want to make sure what we're motioning. The Personnel Committee would be Jen as Chair, Yakub and myself, and the Policy Committee would be Tom, Matt and myself. Those would be that the Committee in Business would remain as Matia, Kenya and myself would remain as the business, okay? So is there a motion for those committees?
Motion.
Second.
Anyone need discussion on those? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Chokat?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharkestein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes. The only question I have, although we appointed Yakov, Yakub, pardon me, Yakov, I worked with at a different.
Yeah, well, we had an attorney whose name was Yakov years ago.
Yes, that's, that's who I worked with, okay? Anyway, um, he, his next, he will be appointed at the next board meeting, which happens after our next committee meeting.
If he clears criminal history. So I'll make sure that somebody reaches out to you tomorrow to explain the process to you. The most important piece is getting an appointment for your fingerprinting, which is a pretty easy process. Kathy Yonkai, my secretary, is an expert at all things onboarding staff, especially lately, so I'll make sure that she connects with you in the very near future.
Now, what happens with the committee meeting, because it's before the board meeting where he's appointed?
It's a good question whether or not he can serve on a non-public committee, I will get that answered, I'll reach out to school boards and have that question answered. I personally have no concerns with it.
Neither do I.
But I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything that we're not supposed to do.
I mean, there's no votes at committee meetings.
There's no votes, it's not a public meeting, you don't have a quorum, so if I had to guess, I'd say it's, it's probably okay, but I, I will double check, and if he is able to attend, I'll make sure that he has all the information. Our committee meetings are done virtually, it's a 30-minute meeting, and you'll get an invite for that, so.
And he would need a school, a school email address.
That's the easiest piece of that, Mr. Oz behind the curtain helps us with that.
Oz will get it. Okay, that takes us up to Superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Just quickly, I wanted to just share, Mrs. Lebron shares that she's sorry that she couldn't be here, she has a family obligation that she, that she couldn't avoid, and wanted to thank Ms. Berkowitz for serving in her place. It is a pleasure to work with you again in this role as Board Secretary. First is the HIV and suspensions. For the month of February, there are zero suspensions, zero HIV investigations. I wanted to point out that on the agenda, there is the December report for revision that will reflect two founded HIV investigations, whereas it previously reflected one founded investigation and one unfounded investigation. Next, I'd like to congratulate our eighth grade Superintendent Roundtable Award winner, who is Michael Kamek. Every year, the Superintendent's Roundtable, which consists of every superintendent in Sussex County, has a nominate, a nomination from every school, I'm sorry, every district, and we go through a process of the teachers of eighth grade students nominate. We were so privileged this year to have nine students nominated, which we've never had anything close to that before, just shows, shows you the quality of the students that were bringing up through eighth grade. They were then asked to write an essay about themselves, submit it, and then all of the teachers of eighth graders were able to vote. Michael's, although all of the essays were wonderful, Michael's won, and I couldn't be more proud of, of a student, you know, who's really worked through so much and has overcome, you know, some, some personal adversity to get where he is today, so congratulations to him. He and his parents will have the opportunity to miss a day of school and come to a luncheon at the Lafayette House, which is, is very well attended throughout the entire county, so congrats to him and his family. The next, I'm going to do three and four in reverse, actually. I wanted to speak to the 100th Day Challenge, which is something that Mrs. Henry has facilitated for many years. The 100th day of school, are on, on and around the 100th day of school, she creates and starts a service project that, that attempts to collect 100 of various items such as combs, brushes, shampoos, conditioners, toilet paper, body soap, deodorant, paper towels. Those are essential needs that some families that are receiving assistance aren't able to get with their food stamps and a lot of the other assisted services where they get that, and, and she, that, those materials are donated to the Connect for Community 100-day School Project. Mrs. Henry leads and facilitates this project, which is assisted by many of our teachers throughout the school and the students, and at the end of February, the Connect for Community program will collect these items and they distribute them to over 40 food pantries and social service agencies over the course of the next year. And this also includes the Stanhope School Community Cares Closet, which is something that Mrs. Mrs. Henry created herself. It really is such a wonderful project, and our school, our school probably donates and raises funds that larger school districts hope to throughout the course of the year. There's such generosity and such care, and it certainly is one of the things that make me so proud to serve as a leader of this district, so thank you to Mrs. Henry, her students and all of the staff and parents that helped make this possible. The reason I flipped the three and four is because the Dine to Donate event that we had last Wednesday at Sal's Pizza was to support the 100-day initiative, and it, you know, there was concern that we wouldn't get the same turnout as last year, because last year was like the first real event, you know, post-COVID where everybody got together, and I, I believe that we were able to disprove that theory. Sal's was, was hopping from lunchtime all the way through close. We in the, in the office, you know, were able to partake in, in a nice heavy lunch, which was a nice change of pace from what we usually eat. Thank you to Sal and his staff for opening the building. Most often, when you do a dine to donate, a lot of the restaurant owners see it as an inconvenience, and they typically will open it for two to three hours and it's dine-in only. He was insistent on, on making it the entire day, and he donated a percentage of whatever came in to this organization. Mrs. Henry shared that they raised over $500, which went to this organization, this, this 100-day service project, which if you think about it, that's $500 of just people coming to eat, and that's of the money that, that he earned. Many of our staff served behind the counter, some served, some waited tables, I swept because I don't have any other talents in the service industry other than kind of just cleaning up after myself and other people, but it really was a wonderful event, and we look forward to doing it again, so I hope.
Sounds like you had a higher attendance, because you collected more money than last year, so people really liked it.
One of the reasons we collected more money, that there was at least one family who wasn't able to attend and reached out to Mrs. Henry directly and made a pretty large donation, rather than, you know, going and purchasing the food, which, which helped considerably. And I think that Sal also topped off at the end and, and added a few extra dollars to give us a nice round number, so I don't know if it was more attended, it was at least as well attended as the previous year, so. The next item I have, you have in front of you our winter newsletter, just wanted to say thank you to everybody who contributed to it. It's nice that not every article is around COVID and coming back from COVID, you know, there's a lot of great things that we're doing again, and, and more than anything, I just wanted to send a very special thank you to Kathy Yonkai, who puts so much time and effort into this, does so so professionally. She edits, she publishes, she collects responses, she nags those of us, mostly me, to get my submission in so that she can get it out to everyone, and I hope that if you haven't already, you take an opportunity to read through it, because there's, there's a lot of really great stuff in there. So that's, that's my report, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Moving on, we start our committee reports. Jen, Personnel Committee, Curriculum, School.
I am happy to say that we had a lot of new hires in the last month. I hope at some point to be able to say that we are fully staffed. I know the day's coming, I don't know when, but I hope you can say it. We also have Ms. Dybus, the art teacher, has, is able to extend the art club after school for, till the end of the year now, right?
So yeah, we had a lot of success, she ran two sections of, of art enrichment in the fall, which was a little bit different than our regular fine arts, whereas students were invited based on their talent and interest in art. It was such a success, it was well attended, she wanted to run another section for each in the spring, and we thought, I thought it was a wonderful idea, which is why I'm recommending it.
We looked at the calendars that are being proposed for the next school year and the tentative for the school year after. So those looked good. And then the rest you just covered in your report regarding Superintendent Roundtable and the newsletter.
Anyone with questions? If we go to business, Kenya?
Yes, so, so number one, we have the financial disclosure statement that Debbie sent an email to everybody last month. So if you haven't done it, it takes a minute to do Debbie and ourselves a favor and do that, please.
Can I jump in real quick and just make one comment? And I just ask, and I know obviously we're all extremely busy, if we can try on a somewhat regular basis to make sure that we're checking our board emails, just so that we don't kind of miss anything, that's the primary vehicle for us to share information with all of you. You know, so it's, when there's an urgent matter, clearly we'll shoot a text just to make sure that you get something. But we just want to make sure, you know, with having some turnover on the board that everybody understands that it's important to check those periodically. I'm sorry to interrupt, thank you.
That was perfect. And then one more thing. Once you do your financial disclosure, please send a quick email to Debbie so she can take you off the list. The other thing is governance. If you are due for any updates, please email Debbie about it. If you are a first-year member, you have to do governance number one. It's like a two-hour course that you take online. She can register you for that. Did you do governance one last year? Okay, so governance two. Don't lag, my friend. Let's get going.
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure.
Amen, amen. Debbie helped me out, I'm registered.
Yeah, I need to do governance three, so I asked for the end of the month. There is an opening there. And then for you two ladies, four, right?
I believe I am done for.
Are you done?
It's only in the year following your next election.
Oh, so only one time?
One, two, three, four, and then reelection. You do four again every second or third year.
Okay, got you, that's good. Because I had it here, every year you have to do number four.
You do not.
That would have been intense, but no, good to know. Thank you for that.
But there's plenty of other things to do in between, believe me.
A school law one would be great.
A school law, there's a finance one coming up also, and then there is all the courses you can take to become certified board member, master board member, and certified board leader. So should you have any interest?
Nice. And then there was some virtual meeting on the 13th. I don't know if anybody attended here. I saw that email, I could not go, but did anybody go here?
I didn't. You were there, right?
Nice.
Matia, Jen?
I have to be there.
Yeah, yes.
Nice. Perfect, so good for that. And then there's another one coming. It's a virtual conference that is gonna be all day long on Tuesday, April 25th, from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00. That one does cost money, so you need to tell Debbie in advance so she can register you. It's $99 a person.
What was that, what is this for?
It's, they are gonna talk about different school topics. It's in one of the emails. It's a spring conference.
The spring update.
Yeah. It's on the 25th, April 25th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
And I would strongly recommend, if you are interested, please get it to us soon so that we can get it approved in March, because our April meeting is gonna be very late, because that's when we're gonna do our budget hearing.
I think March 4th is a legislative update, and there will be members there from the legislature actually presenting at that one. So.
So that was the facilities. I think we have a new cleaning room, which is doing a very good job. So good job. Whoever's doing that.
Resignation that will be approved tonight.
Oh, no, they're telling me that.
But, yes, mostly full. Our full-time staff has been appointed.
Okay, perfect. And then some quick updates on the construction project. We had a pre-bid meeting, I think, this week. I don't know if it happened already. But it was about the STEM lab and the faculty room, which, by the way, there's a small change in the design.
The pre-bid, this pre-bid meeting was the faculty room, the roof, and the bathrooms. And then we'll have additional bid meetings for the STEM lab and for the blacktop outside, which are the projects that we're looking to do this summer.
Okay. And then we also discussed some lonely time items for furniture. So I think Mr. Hagman has a good handle on that. And then also, we discussed the newborn members that were gonna be interviewed during this meeting. Congratulations, Mr. Jagman, on being elected. Looking forward to working with you. We discussed a little bit about the HIV investigation, and then we went into the budget for '23 and '24. We discussed a little bit about it, but more information is gonna be coming up soon. And that was it for our meeting.
Anyone with questions?
I'm just gonna say that the resignation now makes my statement sad. Trying to get him in the door, and they're going out the door.
Yes.
We're happy, like, they're doing a good job, but I didn't last very long.
We're doing okay.
We're doing. Tom, policy?
Sure, we had a discussion of policy number 5561, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion Techniques for Students with Disabilities. Mr. Hagman shared that he is reviewing and discussing terminology related to the policy with his colleagues in the county.
An update, if you don't mind me interjecting real quick. So we had a meeting this morning. So in addition to superintendent, I'm also the director of Special Services, and I met with the other directors in Sussex and Warren County this morning, where both the Sussex County and Warren County supervisor of special ed attended. Ultimately, discussion was relatively brief. The county offices strongly urge that, based on the definition of restraint in New Jersey, that districts do not include a definition for escort, because whatever you would do to escort a child within the building would fall within that definition of restraint. That being said, I still would like to get an opinion from our board's attorney. But as of right now, I'd say that revision is probably dead in the water. But I definitely will provide an update the next policy meeting.
Thank you. Other than that, we spoke about another policy pertaining specifically to high school student representatives at the board level, and it was an opportunity to discuss the possibility of having student representatives partake in discussing updates with the board, but no specific policy readings to review tonight, but could be, you know, for future discussion. We do have a second reading of many policies, regulations, and bylaws that were reviewed and discussed in January, and we are recommending those for adoption this evening.
Anybody with questions? Thank you. Thank you for those reports. Sussex Ed Services, just for the sake of time, things are moving along well. Our new principal's doing a great job. How he did it, I'm not sure. He's there a month, and he hired four speech people, and he hired 11 Paris. So we are fully staffed, except for now we need a school psychologist. Just like this, there's always one more. You know what I mean? So up there. He's also very active in curriculum, and he's trying to bring back some of the programs that we had that not went by the wayside, but we had plans to open up until COVID happened, and one of them is more community outreach and kids going out into the community and working in different places and doing those kinds of things. We've had, I think I've discussed this before, we've had money for a bus two years ago, but we just couldn't hire a bus driver. And we didn't want to spend $85,000 on a bus that's gonna sit in our parking lot, because we don't have anybody to drive it. Well, he's just reawakened that whole idea, and we are out looking for a bus and trying to hire a bus driver and setting up programs and curriculum to go with that. So it's very encouraging. And Roman's doing well, the school's doing well. We're in the middle of budget, just like we are here, and things are going well there. My report for here, in terms of, I did not go to this past month's committee meetings. I think that's the first time since 2017 I've missed a committee meeting, okay? It was my grandson, a senior at Mount Olive Wrestling, and that night there, they were competing for the sectional championships that night on Wednesday night. And I'm glad I went, because they won, and it was great to be there with him his senior year when that happened. So that was, that was good. And I attended, we've had a, we had a budget meeting and been here several times with some discussions with Steve on the phone or Deb on the phone about budget or construction information, whatever. Anybody with questions on either Sussex Services or here?
I don't know if this can help, Gil. I'm not sure how this pertains to the Sussex County Educational Service with the bus, but if you need to talk to somebody in terms of the purchase aspect of the bus, Robert Nussbaum up at Lenape Valley can be a huge asset to you and your team. He's been purchasing buses for Lenape, and he brokers for other school districts as well. And if anyone knows where to get a bus, how to find a bus, or what bus he should get, it's Mr. Nussbaum.
I will.
Karissa, and I can also vouch for Mr. Nussbaum. He's wonderful.
I will pass it on to Andrea, the superintendent.
For what it's worth, I don't know if it can help.
It's worth.
Also, he sends out monthly notifications to anybody on his email chain of any buses that are available or becoming available for bid.
Okay.
So we can get you associated with him very quickly.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Not hearing any other questions? That takes us to our first public session. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Not hearing anyone from the public. We're stepping forward from the public. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is minutes for approval. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
The minutes are from the January 12th regular meeting. So this is a voice vote, and we are voting for the January 12th minutes as written, okay? So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
Abstain, and that was January 11th, right?
January, I have January 12th on the agenda. I'm not sure of the date.
I think it's 11th.
What?
11th, January 11th.
The 11th was a Wednesday?
Yeah.
We'll update that in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is administrative action items. That's items one through three. Motion, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? No returns, questions? Vote, please.
Mrs. Chauquette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Next, we have policy action items, one through three. Anyone with a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? This is the second reading, so we've gone through these already, as Tom had mentioned.
Yes, these will be the second readings.
Yep.
So Mrs. Chauquette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay. Next is education action items, one through three. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? I, you know, I looked at the calendars, and I think it's this year's, this year's calendar ends on a Monday for staff. They come Friday and Monday on the last day, is that?
Yes, but that also varies depending on the snow days that we use. So the end, the end of our school year is very flexible and variable, and those last two staff in-service days are typically not attended, because those are the two days that we use for our flex PD. We build them in for any staff that doesn't complete their flex PD, and then they would have to come in those two days.
Okay, I was just trying not to stress the year out.
Yeah, no.
That's all.
School started so, typically the second week of September these past two years. So now it's gonna feel like it's starting so quickly, right?
No, we've started the day after Labor Day.
The day after Labor Day, because it happens on the first.
For as far back as I can remember. And you'll notice that is for these next two years, that's the goal again. So for the first time in many years, we actually have staff returning in August, the two days prior to the Labor Day weekend, you know, which, again, one of them was approved last year, tentatively. Last year was the first time that we went two years out, and the hope is to assist families and staff members with vacation planning, so that you know, you know, two years out when these dates are going to be, again, tentatively, so that you can schedule your vacations around the start of school.
Need a vote on that, correct?
Yes, please.
So let's take a vote.
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Just one more quick point. I will be getting those calendars out to the community and parents in tomorrow's email blast, so everybody will have them.
Next is personnel action items. On the agenda, it says one through eight, but nine is an addendum, so it's items one through nine. And nine is the resignation of the part-time custodian. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Chauquette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Next is business, business action items, agenda items one through 15, and addendum items 16 through 18. Any chance especially to look at the addendum items? Note, number nine is typically done every year, am I correct, Steve? That's the waiver?
Yes, so semi, and Karissa is more of an expert on this than I am, but ultimately, there are a number of students who are eligible, and if we fall under that number, then we are able to waive semi, which, from what I understand from my colleagues, is a major, major pain in the butt.
Yes.
So we're happy to do so.
So I have a question on 16, the roof renovation. Was there a reason that the DA Knoll, Inc. came in so much higher?
So these bids come in blindly, right? So they're dropped off, these companies submit a proposal, a bid, and by law, we have to accept, as, as long as it meets all the specs and, and the expectations, we have to accept the lowest bid. So, it's not, yeah, so the one that came in so high.
It just really stood out, because the other ones were pretty in alignment.
Yeah, they, they didn't know what anybody else was bidding, it's not like an auction type of thing.
Gotcha, thank you.
And that is the same for the next two after that as well.
As I mentioned earlier, all, all three bids came under the budgeted amount, which was awesome. Anyone else with questions on any of the items? So, I guess, part of the reason for trying to get these bids out a little bit early and get them awarded, is that we get on the calendar for construction, you know what I mean, that we get on early so we can get a little bit of choice as to when this stuff is done, and...
Yeah, one of the concerns that I have is, you know, we really aren't able to establish dates for our summer programs yet, until we coordinate with these contractors, because I have to make sure that the, the dates that we have students in the building are safe dates for them to be in the building. You know, you have to be careful, especially with a roof project, you know, you don't want kids in the classroom when you're working directly above that classroom. So, I apologize for the delay for parents who are waiting for those dates, you know, especially with our, our summer programs, our ESY program, but hopefully within the next month, we'll have an idea, and allowing us to get these items on the addendum tonight gives us a month head start to start working with them.
Does every contractor have the opportunity to come out and see the roof, or the...
Yes. Our architect came with some of the contractors, I believe he also wrote a report that he was able to share as part of the bid, bid opening, that everybody was able to review before they put their bid in.
I noticed that for both bids, the selected contractor was the lowest bid?
Have to be, have to, by law.
Is that how it is? You don't look at anything else?
Well, I mean, the architect does review the bids to make sure that all of the components are included, to make sure that every, every part of, of the project is included in that proposal, but yeah, we by law have to take the lowest bid. And, and my concern has always been.
Independently of quality, independently of proposal.
So that's always been my concern. Fortunately, we asked Anthony, our architect, whether or not he was familiar with the people who bid, and he said he's familiar with every single one of these companies, and he doesn't have any concerns regarding the quality of work. But yeah, that's always a question, right? You get the lowest bid, and, and, you know, you're afraid you're going to get the least quality work, that is an issue, I mean, but at the end of the day, we don't really have much of a choice.
And you said that these bids were under the estimated?
Yes.
Numbers that we had?
So they are under the estimated number, keep in mind that we did include contingencies and fees in each of the project numbers, but we're, we're in very good shape with these. You had mentioned in the committee report that there was a slight revision, and that was to the faculty room renovation, we had initially discussed with the architect knocking down a wall to give a little bit more space for some of the equipment, we're moving the, the copy machines in there, and we had hoped for a little bit more space for the laminator, it just didn't work out, it would have eliminated an entrance for the staff, and, and if we had a door there, it would have been too clunky with Debbie's office right there, so by eliminating the demolition of that wall, it allowed the bids to come in a lot less expensive than what we were expecting.
And the, and the bathroom renovations, they're literally less than half, than what was stipulated on the contract originally, right, on the estimates?
So again, the bathroom renovations are, it's not tile or walls or anything, you're talking urinals, toilets, stalls, sinks, stuff like that.
So the only piece, the only missing piece would be the tiles.
Pretty much, so, yeah, the existing floors and walls are still in good shape, and, and they'll stay as is.
And the other piece don't forget is that what you don't see in there is the architect's cost. In other words, when they put, let's just say they put, they put a price of seventy-five thousand dollars for that project, well, fifteen thousand of that was for the architect, so when it goes out to bid, the bid threshold is really sixty thousand for the work, the other fifteen thousand was for the architect, you don't, you don't see that piece, because in each, in each job, the architect's fees are in with that job, so when he did the roof, whatever the estimate was for the roof included all of his architectural work and writing of specs and bidding process for that. So the bid comes in under that, it sounds like it's really great, we saved all that money, but you really didn't, because that's the architect's fee. So there is, there is money, we did save money, no question with the way the bids came in, but it's not as big a dollar you, you think, because the arch, and the fees are in there also, so.
Keep in mind, too, that we have other projects to bid, based on some of the tweaks that we have to the initial plan in the media center, I would expect that to maybe be slightly higher, if not right at what we budgeted, so I'm thrilled that we were able to take some money from the faculty room and possibly put it into that space, which I'm very, very excited about, and, and I hope to soon share some details of what we're looking to do. And honestly, with the cost of oil right now, I, I mean, who knows what the, the asphalt's going to come in at, you know, outside that blacktop, so, so far, so good, but we still have other projects to bid.
And, and, and a lot of times on those bids, when you question the, whether they're under or not, that's what we rely on the architect for, because the architect writes a set of specs, and those specs tell you what kind of roof it has to be, what's the warranty on the roof, what's the insulation process, you know, that all that stuff is written into the spec, and that goes out to bid, and the bidder sends back, and he, it's his obligation to make sure that what the bidder bids on is what's the same thing as what he wrote in his spec, and that's the crucial part, so you don't, you're not bidding a top-notch roof and they're bidding on a subpart roof, they have to bid on the upper one, and that's, that's your architect's responsibility to, to make sure that what they return matches what his specifications are, and that's, that's crucial.
How are, how are change orders addressed within the bid process or the contracts from the architect?
I, I, I know how they're handled, I don't know what the process is that you've outlined here, does it go...
To be honest with you, this is the first time I'm doing this, you know, so I, I will be relying on my colleagues, you know, in other districts, as well as leaning heavily on the architect, who I've now worked with all nine years that I've been here, I have tremendous trust in him, and, you know, I, I see myself as a transparent person, this is the first time I'm going through this process, so.
A lot of it depends on the kind of change order, you know what I mean? For example, on a roof, there's probability, a contingency there for roof repair, all right, you open up the roof and there's a bad section, there's a, on a roof like this, there might be twenty to fifty K in there for repair of that roof, because you opened up and it's bad, well, all of a sudden, it's seventy-five. Now that requires a change order, come back, that has to go through the superintendent, the BA, and anything over that contingency becomes a board approval, okay? A, a change order because, hey, you know what? It would be better if we did it this way, we just found that out, and that's going to add ten thousand dollars to the way we do the STEM lab. That comes, that generates a plan from the architect, and it works its way back through the board, everything that's expended has to go through here. Every bill that's sent on this project is approved by this board, whether it's a change order, or just the payment of, of the bill, it all has to come through, through the board.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else questions? Roll call.
We need a motion first.
Oh.
Motion?
Thank you. Thank you.
Roll call, though.
Okay, Alan, Mrs. Chauquette.
So we discussed that without a motion.
Mrs. Chauquette? Okay, Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay, that takes us to our, we're closing in on the end here, we have new business and old business, anyone with new business? I have one short comment on the old business, and I hate to sound like a broken record, but last meeting I gave you a, a sheet of paper that had on it the timetable for the CSA evaluation, and today is the actual kickoff day, today's meeting, starting between today and March 15th. The superintendent will start preparing his evidence for meeting's district goals, and identifying factors of his ability to meet the standards of leadership, okay? And when that's done, we, on March 30th, he submits that, and once he submits that, and once he submits his selfie valve, that opens up a portal at New Jersey School Boards, which will allow you to log in, and you can get the form to fill out for the evaluation, and that's we move on to the next step after that, okay? Just so you know, we're, we're in that process, and Steve, I'm sorry to do that to you in between, not having a principal here, between, you know, all the craziness that's going on, but...
It'll get done.
Well, it'll get done, but if you heard Gail Carrick say at, at the meeting, at the school boards, the Sussex County meeting, that's the hardest thing she has getting from schools.
Which is scary. It's scary to me, that districts don't evaluate their superintendents.
You'd be amazed.
She definitely made it, she, she drove that point home.
Yes, yes, yes. Anyone else, old business? Following along, public session number two. Anybody from the public? Not hearing anyone from the public, it comes to adjourn. Before we adjourn, I'd just like to congratulate you, sir, on your appointment. You're welcome, we're, we're, we're looking forward to have you onboard. As soon as the meeting's over, I'd just like to exchange cell numbers with you, so if you need information, or in case I need to contact you between now and sometime in March, we can do that, okay? Good, good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. We got, we got like three seconds here. Polls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Better not. Thank you very much.